...the town's website, who will now have identification with the people.
Dear heaven and father, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for this group of our fine citizens that's gathered here to make their voices known and state their opinions the best that can be allowed. We want you to watch over us council members, give us the wisdom and knowledge to make the decisions that is best suited for our town, that it will best serve you. And that being said, thank you for all your many blessings on our town and community. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
May I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Don't have any presentations, do we? Patrick?
No presentations.
Okay. Okay, citizens' comments, at this time I'll open the floor to comments from the audience. Ordinarily, we let only our citizens speak, the town speak, although since there are a couple of properties that border this development, we'll be talking about later on, we're allowing citizens from outside the town to speak tonight. There'll be a three-minute time limit on each one, and if you have any concerns or anything, we'd be directed to the council, and we cannot be directed to any of our personnel. First up is Ken McKelvey.
Thank you, sir. Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Ken McKelvey. I was raised here in Paklet and went away to school and haven't been back permanently since then, but I've constantly came back because my mother and father lived here for those years, and my brother and sister. I rise in support of this ordinance to allow this building to go on in the residential community. Having traveled here for the last forty years just visiting, you know, you have to see that Paklet desperately needs growth, or I really don't believe it'll be very much of anything in the next twenty or thirty years. We have to somehow grow this community in order for the community to survive. We need to be looking out for young people, and we need the young people to look out for the next young people. This property will certainly do that. The price ranges that this contractor is talking about or the developer, the hope is, I think, that we will have some new people move into Paklet, that become community and be our neighbors and our residents, and let the town grow from there. So I support it. I do not think it's going to be anything material in respect to the traffic necessarily, because it's a dual-lane highway, and there's plenty of room for the travel back and forth. It gives us the opportunity, I believe, to have Paklet almost guarantee its future, because if this is successful, we know others will come and it'll grow. If it's not successful, I came through Lockhart coming here, and I know some of you have gone through Lockhart recently, there's not much there, and you don't see any new houses, you don't see anybody that's going to be there in twenty or thirty years. So I think that if we care about our town and care about its future, this is the way you guarantee its future, is you have people that are young, that want to be here, that have more young people that also want to be here. So I would ask you to strongly consider Paklet as a town and its future when you consider this ordinance. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Leland McKelvey.
I've been following that guy all my life. I, you know, owned the lighthouse for forty-five years. I'm Leland McKelvey, I'm sorry. Apologize. I'm the baby brother of that fellow. I recently sold that piece of property to Wilton Jordan, Jordan Oil Company. He's out of the country, but he wanted me to read this about this housing developments coming up. He said, "We believe in Paklet, and we believe that Paklet can be a grow vibrant community. We're all completely in favor of this new ordinance to let this housing development stop. This is why a hotspot is going to invest five to seven million dollars, building a new hotspot for Paklet and the surrounding community. Also, if this passes, it'll definitely figure out how we're going to put our store, how large we're going to put it, which makes a big difference." And I thought about a lot of it, and about Paklet growing and all that. I see all these mill houses that's deserted and gone and falling apart, and the river, the water, is our number-one resource. The water, everybody loves water. We've got to have enough people here to pay for what we need, for the roads and whatever, to utilize our biggest asset to this whole community is the river. So that's important. Highways, 176 to end it, average sixteen thousand cars a day. 176 to 585, thirty-three thousand cars a day. I talked with the highway department, and they said that this highway from Paklet Union could handle eighty thousand cars a day. Eighty thousand. Not going to be near what eighty, going 585 is going to be. So traffic is not going to be an issue here. But the jobs, the river, putting water in sewer, the fire departments, rescue squads, schools, town services, the mill houses that's falling apart, let's get them fixed. Instead of a kid trying to build a new house, which he probably can't afford, he could probably afford one of these mill houses. He could live there for ten years, get him a good job, his wife get a good job, have a future, and then he can move out to build a nice home, and then another small family could come in here and keep our kids here. Let's put something for them to stay here for. It makes sense to me. You could afford a mill house versus a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home in Spartanburg. And instead of living with grandma, let this new couple have a chance to have a home of their own. And I think this development will set the precedence of getting this started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Leland. Okay, Johnny Trammell.
State your name and... I'm Johnny Trammell, honorable mayor, council. I lived in Paklet and grew up here most of my life. I moved away for work, and then when I retired, I wanted to come back home. Paklet was always a place I was proud of, but coming back, it was really just a culture shock to see how far the town had fallen. I know when the mill closed, that sent a lot of people away, the high school was torn down, and like some of the others had mentioned previously, there's really not a lot to draw people to Paklet. I've seen new businesses try to come in, little mom-and-pop shops. Right below the China King, there's probably been three or four places just since we've been back that I've seen try it and fail. Above there, there's Run on the Curve, there's been a pizza place, meat and vegetables place, and none of those have made it. We've got two or three little places in there. We've got a new one now in Paklet in the old brown store that's trying to make it. But these places only have limited sources for people to come in. A new development like that, even say two-hundred-and-seventy houses with an average of three to a family, you're talking about over eight hundred new people, and if only ten percent of those come out, that's a lot more to help these little businesses, and this one's trying to make it in the little town. So I agree with the others. If you look at Lockhart and some of the others, there's just nothing left there, and I'd hate to see Paklet be that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chantel Lemmons.
Good evening, Chantel Lemmons. So I wanted to present to you today because I know that it was mentioned about getting people in support of the housing development that nobody had gone on record and spoken. And I would like to point out that there is a large voice on the other side, too, that has not spoken. We have a neighborhood petition. We have one hundred and thirteen residents that have signed, one hundred and ninety-three signatures in total, and we've only done this for a few days now. They don't want the dense growth. They don't want it. And, you know, I hear a lot about how we need this growth, we need this growth, and this community is so sad. I am part of this community, and the people that sign this are part of this community. Are you calling us sad? Are you saying that we're not contributing? We have children in schools here. We, you know, serve on PTA boards. We help at our local churches. And maybe if you'd take the time to actually put your feet on the ground and talk to some of these people, you'd see that there's a lot more going on. There's a lot of young people. There are people with children here. And we're saying that we don't want this dense housing here. We want somewhere for our kids to be able to spread out later, if they so choose to, that they will have green space to have. I have an eighteen-year-old who doesn't plan on leaving. I'm hoping he goes ahead and buys a house in Paklet, and right now, it says there's no housing. There's at least six different houses over on the Mill Hill on my side for sale. Come in and fix them up, be part of our neighborhood. I don't understand where the idea that we have nothing available and we have to put this dense housing in to save ourselves, that doesn't make sense to me. Past the opposition that we have to the thing, like I said, we have one hundred and thirteen. Do you have one hundred and thirteen people that are standing here saying that they want the housing development? So if it's going to be a numbers game, then let's hear that. I'd love to actually hear more than a few people say, "Well, we want this because we remember what Paklet was," and in the meantime, bashing the people who are trying to recreate Paklet and make it what it can be in the future, and we're willing to contribute to that. Furthermore, when this came up, I had asked where the signature from Mr. Wilson was. In the packet, in the zoning approval forms, required attachments, check each item is completed. Certification of property owner consent, if applicant is not the owner, mark three is not the owner, there is a required attachment saying certificate of property owner consent. I've asked for this document. I've been denied to be liable to look at it. Why? Why can I not see the document that has Mr. Wilson's signature on it stating that he gave mark three the permission to ask for the rezoning? I got a vague comment about a sales contract that was private that I wasn't privy to. How, as a planning commission member, am I not privy to a required attached document so that I can make an ethical vote? Furthermore, the planning commission unanimously denied this request. When you approved the zoning ordinance, in there, there's a function and powers of the planning commission. If you look under that specifically, the planning commission shall have the authority and responsibility to, and if you look under number four, if a comprehensive plan containing at least a major street element shall have been adopted, which it was, and if subdivision regulations shall have been adopted, which they were, then the planning commission shall have review and approval slash disapproval authority over subdivision plots. This was a subdivision plot. We had the full layout of it. We denied it. So did mark three give you the appropriate documents to appeal to council to overturn our denial? Are you all aware of the authority that you approved in the zoning ordinance that you gave the planning commission on the subdivision plots? Is, you know, I'm getting two versions of information. This is just a rezoning, or it's finalized, and this is going to go ahead and go down if it's approved. So which one is it? Are we, when you approve this, is the subdivision plot then approved, too? Because if that's the case, where's the appeal? Where's the appeal that overrides our denial, that asks you to override that denial from mark three? So I would really appreciate it if maybe we would look back at some of this stuff, and instead of trying to rush this process, because I got an email for this meeting for the planning commission, just a little before, saying we need people, we have to have it now, this needs to happen now, slow down and get our processes right and make wise decisions. We can do very good growth in this community. We can do wise growth, we can do methodical growth. It does not have to be a big explosive dense growth the way that this is being presented, and there's no room for negotiation in this. That's not somebody we should be working with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have the certification of property owner consent?
Yes, we do.
I didn't see that in my council packet either. Is that something we can see?
It was included in the packet to the planning commission?
I haven't seen it.
It was included in the packet to the council as well.
I did not see it in my council packet. I don't think anybody has seen that document. I think it's okay to take the time to produce that document.
We're not going to hold it up too long, though.
Right. It shouldn't take long. I mean, it's part of records, and this is obviously a big topic, so it should be right on top of any file out there, so it should be easy to pick up.
This is the document that shows that the property owner, Mr. Wilson, is giving permission to mark three properties and Blue Water Civil Design Act as agent in regard to this property. That was included in your packets. It was included in council's packets. It was included in the planning commission packets.
But it says it's a certification. This just says acting agent authorization form. It doesn't say anything about it being certified. Is that not two different things?
This is the form that's been signed by Mr. Wilson and provided for the company's act as his agent in regards to this project.
I understand what you're saying, but the packet says a certification. So I'm just, that's two different things to me. A certification and an authorization form are two.
What would be the difference?
Because one, I guess, will be certified and notarized, and this just says...
Certified and notarized, that's two different things, too.
Okay, good. I'm glad you said that. So authorization forms and certification...
No, I'm talking about, you said certified and notarized. That's two different things than certified.
Authorization to me and certified is two different. I'm going to just look at the definition, but I think that's...
I think the issue from the beginning is because the planning commission never received this document, nor did the council.
That is incorrect. The planning commission did receive this document.
The planning commission member that spoke earlier said that she never received that document. Myself, I've resolved mine, too, and I never received this document either. This is the first time I've actually seen it myself.
It was in the packet.
Excuse me?
It was in the packet, wasn't it?
It wasn't. I saved it.
It was not in my council packet. I don't know if your packet's different to mine. It's feasible. Mr. Kay may do something like that. I don't really know. But my documents did not have that particular page in there.
Let me stop right here a minute, Jason. We're not going to take any questions from the audience. Y'all just don't yell out or anything like that. We're going to take it. You know, it's our time to study. Y'all just, you know, be calm. We'll get to the answer to this.
I don't think any of the public has said anything. I think everybody's calm right now.
They did. I'm just warning, we're not going to have it tonight. Go ahead, Jason.
Can we get a copy of that petition to put into the record, into the minutes?
Absolutely.
So we can review that.
Is that all?
The minutes would reflect from the planning commission whether that document was in there or not, right?
No, not necessarily.
Those minutes haven't actually been approved yet, nor has the minutes from the last council meeting. And I didn't see that document in the last council meeting minutes either.
The council doesn't normally put all of that, all the documents into the minutes. The minutes is what was actually spoken during the meeting.
I agree. But however, all documents that we're supposed to approve or not approve that pertain to the review or the ordinance or the change in district should be in the minutes regardless. I mean, all the documents should be available. If there was a FOIA request or anything like that, all the documents should be there so that they could be approved as written or as entered. I didn't see that document in my council packet. I didn't see that at all last council meeting, so I don't believe that document would exist in the last meeting minutes. So therefore, it hasn't really existed until tonight.
So you're saying because you didn't see it, it didn't exist?
I looked for it. It was written as it was in the council packet, but it was not in the council packet. That specific document was not in the council packet. I looked for it.
That doesn't make it not a document, though. That doesn't make it not a legal document, right?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I mean, it's authorized, I mean, it's authorized signature and all. I mean, if we have it now, I mean, what difference does it make?
Was the planning commission presented with the document, or was the council presented with the document last time?
I think so, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't make a legal document. What I'm saying is that I looked for it. I didn't see it either. All I'm doing is agreeing with the member that, the public person that stood up and said that they didn't review that document either. There was also a member of the planning commission that asked for it, that never received it, and her email and request for it was denied, and she never received a copy of it until now it's presented tonight.
That's a lie.
That's all I'm agreeing to. I'm not saying that it didn't exist.
Okay, then, what are you saying?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, ma'am, that I think I said what I'm saying.
Okay, what's the point?
I think I made my point, too.
Okay. All right. Then what are you requesting now? You want it now, or we seen it on the screen?
Excuse me?
We saw it on the screen. Were you needing anything else on it?
No, I don't need anything else. It's there now.
Okay. All right. The next one up is Rachel Pratt.
See if I can get that right. Good evening. I'm Dr. Rachel Pratt. I'm a local business owner here in Paklet, and I talk fast, so I hope that we can listen fast. Since opening my practice here in Paklet, I've had the opportunity to see what it takes to be a small business owner in this town. I have watched...
If you could speak into that microphone pretty good.
I'm usually a loud talker. I usually don't need a microphone. I've watched and participated in investing time and money and energy and resources into trying to bring life back into Paklet, and I know just how difficult that can be. I've watched as people who truly care about this town not only face challenges, but criticism, pressure, and sometimes even hostility. Simply being vocal, especially in front of, or especially in support of something new, can often come with consequences. One business owner's faced over a dozen formal complaints, including several tied to a family member, a member of this council's family. He's been cleared in every case, and yet tension and criticism continue. I truly believe that we can hold each other accountable without having to ruin someone's livelihood. So while I understand how loud the opposition here is tonight, I know that many are not willing or able to face that kind of retaliation and have chosen to remain silent on public platforms. As for me, I didn't choose Paklet because I thought it would someday make me rich. I chose it because it reminded me of where I grew up in Ohio. Very small town, same size, similar history, same heart. And so I see something here that's worth protecting. I know that there's a lot of concern that growth is going to change the town, but I don't believe anyone here who supports this development wants to see Paklet become the next big city. We're here because we see the charm and the potential, and we want to preserve it, not replace it. Some are worried that new residents won't support the town, but the people who move here have over a dozen neighborhoods to choose from. If they choose Paklet, it's not by accident. It's because they want to see, they see what we see. They want small-town life with community and connection, and they want their kids to grow up knowing their neighbors. There's also been talk that this development doesn't match Paklet, but many of the Mill Village homes were originally built as duplexes on ten-thousand-square-foot lots, meaning five-thousand-square-feet per home. So high density has always been part of Paklet's design, and we've accepted it in the past, and we look back on it with reverence, but now suddenly, it's not a big, it's a big deal. I do want to say, as someone mentioned earlier, that we want our kids to have a place to grow up and to sprawl. Not everybody wants that. Not everybody wants a big yard. Not everybody wants to have to keep up with yard work, and heck, the biggest code violations on mowed lawns, so maybe people do need smaller lots. I've seen the kind of people who are choosing Paklet not to change it, but to invest in it. Non-Paklet natives have volunteered their free time and money to restore buildings that have sat vacant for three years, to build parks and public green space, to organize and carry out community cleanups, hosting family events and community, family-friendly community events. Some are revitalizing the area around the fishing pier. Others are restoring the Mill Hill Rock Wall. There are plans to clean up other local historic sites like the Tail Race, the Little Acre, and the amphitheater Victor Park, Hotel Hill, and more. I got like ten seconds left. So this isn't about erasing Paklet's history. It's about welcoming people who believe it. So I do support this development, not because I want to change Paklet, but because I believe that this is one way that we can protect it, by guiding the growth with intention and making room for those who want to call this place home, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, yeah, Jamie Cooper.
Hi, my name's Jamie Cooper. I live at 350 Sunset Drive. I'm District Three. I attend nearly all of the town meetings and the events in this town, and I love seeing this room filled up. It should be like this every month, not when there's just a problem. I hear two things many people say. Number one, Paklet needs growth, or we're not against growth. And number two, we do not want to become Boiling Springs. I don't think anyone wants to become Boiling Springs, but we can learn from their mistakes. They grew too fast, they grew too much, and had limited and poor planning. I don't think there is a perfect solution for growth, but growth starts with ideas and plans. A plan is described as an intention about what one is going to do. I hear many, many plans for Paklet. I hear plans for the flats. I hear plans for the cloth room, plans for Coleman's, more stores, more restaurants, more things to do. Most recently, a plan to rezone the development that has drawn all of this attention. A few months ago, during rezoning, this area also received a lot of attention, didn't know what to do with it. I was there at the meetings. It was a big issue during the meetings and also people around town. What do we do with it? What we also have here is opportunity. I think that's a major factor. There's not a lot of opportunity that has come through Paklet in recent years. Opportunity is defined as a set of circumstances that makes it possible to do something, possible to put those plans in motion. This opportunity is going to take three to five years to complete and many years to see the impacts on our community. Hopefully, there will be more opportunities also in the future. If zoning is not changed for this property, does Paklet just wait for light industrial to come to us? What will that light industry, will it be welcomed with open arms by Paklet? Council members, tonight, you vote for opportunity. If not here and now, when and where does Paklet grow? Thank you.
Thank you. Darling Henderson.
Hello, I'm Darling Henderson. I am a lifelong resident, born, raised, and stayed, I like to say. But I'm actually reading from another town resident who couldn't be here because her son is in the championship baseball game tonight. This is from Shelby Covington. Good evening, town council members. My name is Shelby Covington, and I've taught high school for the last ten years, nine of those in Boiling Springs. I'm here tonight, she's actually not, asking you to stand by the previous decision to deny the zoning request for the high-density development being proposed. As someone who has seen the rapid growth in Boiling Springs from an educational standpoint, I can tell you firsthand, the strain felt from rapid growth. When too many students enter the schools all at once, even over a few years' time, it becomes nearly impossible to give them all the time, attention, and support they need. Teachers are stretched thin, and students end up missing out on the quality education they deserve. One of the biggest reasons families are drawn to Paklet is because of our schools, and a big part of what makes our school special is the small class sizes and student-teacher relationships formed from them. Those manageable numbers are what allow teachers to really connect with their students, to build relationships, and to help them become better adults. But when you pack classrooms and overcrowd buildings, that all goes away. And with the teacher shortage we're already facing nationwide, we simply do not have the staff to handle a major population jump in this area. It's not fair to the students, it's not fair to the teachers, and it's not sustainable for our schools. At the heart of it, we all know what makes our town special, is the small-town feel, the close-knit neighborhoods, and the way people genuinely care about one another. High-density housing may bring short-term profits, but in the long run, it threatens the very charm and... the very charm and livability that made, that made people want to move here in the first place. Please don't trade our community's character and the equality of our children's education for unchecked growth. I urge you to continue protecting what makes this town feel like home and seek other options for sustainable growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Henderson.
Been here 30 years, married a lifelong resident. We do need growth in Paklet. There's no denying that. We're not, we're not saying we don't want growth. We're not saying we don't want a neighborhood. What we don't want is the high-density neighborhood that we're looking at. If this is passed under the F R D zoning, that means you can just add, add, add. If anything else, at the least, it should be done at R 20 at the most. That should be it, nothing else. I gave you guys some paperwork a while ago, I left it on the desk. There's two maps, one Spartanburg County, one in Spartanburg City. They work together in conjunction to show crime statistics through G I S. If you look at the circles, the bigger circles show how many, how many people are impacted. If you look at it, the yellow circles are people that are crimes against persons, and the blue circles are crimes against property. I'm sorry, I don't have it up on the board for everybody else to see, but if you look at the map of Spartanburg County, you see the high-density area right around the city limits of Spartanburg is where the majority of the crimes happen. Crime is not happening because of the neighborhood itself, crime is an opportunity. Most criminals don't do stuff just because it, they do it because it's there, the opportunity's there, and the more people you bring in, the more opportunities you bring in. You can go down right here off of Old Canaan Road and look at one apartment complex, that place never, you can look all around it, there's small circles dotted here, there, and everywhere else, but there's one apartment complex sitting there, and it's got all the big circles on it, big blue, big yellow, and everything else. If you look at that, you can see crime comes with it. It doesn't, it's not that it's a bad neighborhood, it's just people, and when people come in, you introduce more crime. If you want to see more of the statistics, there are spreadsheets and everything else. There's a nice lady at the city of Spartanburg, her name is Nicole Combs. You can call her and talk to her, she'll give you all the information. There's pages and pages and pages of it, and she works in conjunction with Spartanburg County Sheriff's Department. They don't have statistics from any of the small towns because they don't keep records, y'all keep your own records, they don't have them. But we don't need a high-density area. We need, we need growth, we do. We need a neighborhood. Put a neighborhood back there, but just don't put the neighborhood where they're going to have 276 homes on less than 50 acres. That's way too condensed, that's way too many houses and everything else. Let's go with R 20. If you're going to change the zoning, change it to R 20. Don't go with the, I call it the free-range development. That F R D just, they can do what they want to do, as long as y'all sit here and say, "Yes, okay, go ahead." As long as the Planning Commission and council approves it, they can do what they feel like, and there's no regulations until they come and ask. That, if you go under R 20, that's what, it stays, and it's locked in that way. It was already, it was actually residential prior to this. It was under the fringe stuff, on the old development. And then shortly before all this happened, it was rushed in to change it to industrial, light industrial, because somebody was supposed to be coming in with a light industrial. And then it, then it changes, and now we've got to rush back and rush back and change it back over to something else, just so somebody can come in and build, you know, a ton of homes on it. That, it just doesn't need to happen that way.
You mean the review district? What do you mean? The review district means that, what do you mean by that? Once it's a review district, what are you trying to say after that?
Well, I mean, what are the limitations?
So once it's a review district, council has no say-so in it whatsoever, right? It becomes, it becomes a sole decision on the town administrator, period. So if we review it as a review district, then council has no say-so, period, what comes and what doesn't come, or anything like that, it's, it's all on the administrator.
It goes to the town administrator.
Yeah, the zoning administrator.
And he's already told us he don't work for the town, he don't work for the citizen, he works for...
Yeah, the zoning administrator gets all say-so whatsoever, which is kind of conflicting with the form of government we have right now.
That is completely false.
Excuse me, I'm talking. The form of government we have is a council form of government, and you told me last council meeting that if something was brought to review, then you didn't have to bring it to council to approve it or disapprove it.
That was only for the condemnations and selling properties for...
I asked you, once it's a review district, would you bring it to council, and you said you didn't have to. That's what you said to me.
That was, it was not about review district.
I'm sorry, why, again, why are you arguing with me?
Because you're lying to council and the community.
I mean, it's, it's very obvious, the last council meeting, it's on the minutes. You specifically said you don't have to.
For, only for code enforcement and condemnation.
Hold on, both of you. Mr. Heath Henderson had the floor. Y'all can argue about this later.
I'm sorry, Mr. Henderson. Do you have anything else?
I didn't have to do it tonight. My three minutes is up. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily Snap.
That's a lot to follow. I'm Emily Snap. I've lived here for almost 20 years. I want to first say, I really appreciate you guys taking your time, putting yourselves in a volunteer position to serve our town's needs. Thank you, each and every one of you. We love Paklet. We've lived, my husband and I, is when I say we. He's lived here all his life, I've been here for 20 years. We like growth, and we acknowledge, the McKelvey's both have made some incredible comments about our need. I agree, I don't want to see Paklet become lockhart. High-density isn't the only path forward towards that, and so I would like to see the Planning Commission's thoughtful decision to recommend against high-density. I would like to see that honored tonight in the vote. I would also like to see the power to approve and disapprove stay with council. You guys live here, you work here, you're raising your families here. I would much rather see that power stay with you all to approve and disapprove future developments. Thank you, guys. Super grateful for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
DeeDee Quinn.
My name is Beverly Quinn. I own property that abuts the parcels in question. I don't think I need to say anymore, you know who I am. It's recorded in minutes prior. Once again, I stand before you asking, please do not trade the heart of our town for short-term gain. I do support growth, not the high-density neighborhood. But the main overarching concern over this whole entire process that I bring to your attention, that is at the crux of this, everyone has spoken of it, the town has to do better. Your processes and practices are not effective, and they actually border on unethical procedures in informing the public. You see public more, the public voice you see more as a hindrance than in the process in opportunity. The public voice should be an opportunity to make things better. That's how the public voice is supposed to be used, and I do not see that in these practices of this town government whatsoever. In fact, tonight, I don't think that people even in this room at this moment understand that your vote tonight is not just rezoning, it is in fact rezoning and the planned development. Those two things should not be voted on at the same time. That is not normal procedure. I have had council inform me of that very fact. In fact, council spoke to our town administrator about that. That is not normal procedure. That is evidence of rushing something through a process that does not even align with what is outlined in your updated town ordinance. If you look at the R F D process, pages 97 through 99, I might be a page off, what you see outlined for R F D is not what's happening here, okay? If you, everything that's been addressed on this agenda is only saying rezoning. So how could we be approving a whole planned development? That makes no sense. It's not going through the process. So I'll leave that with you, and then I'll explain to you that I did submit three different requests on June 12th for your requests for multiple documents and surveys, including the environmental impact survey. Again, those documents don't exist because they aren't required for rezoning.
Actually, three minutes.
So if we're only rezoning, then what are we doing?
Okay.
Again, ethics of the town government is absolutely in question with this project.
Thank you. Joyce Garner.
Good evening, I'm Joyce Garner. I appreciate all of your time as well, but I do believe that you're here to represent the people of Paklet, and that our voices and our concerns about this community you should take to heart. I think my husband was probably the closest friend that Mike had that owned this property, and two weeks before he died, he showed Rick a plat of what he had agreed to in the rezoning. It was for 159 houses. He saw that on paper. Two weeks later, he died. We saw him three days before he died. He never mentioned a change. I'm concerned about, when did it grow from 159 to over 200, closer to 300 homes? We were told similar to the one in Union. I want to say, I went and looked at the one in Union, and I could lay down, and my toes and my head would touch between houses. This is going to be like a row house. No sawed walls, the driveways are only large enough for two cars to go through, kids can't even ride a bike, and out of 300 acres of that development, there's no playground, there's no pool, and there's no green space for all these children. Okay, we're talking about over 200. If you put two children in every home, what is that doing to our schools? That's a lot to consider. Also, I did talk with the homeowner down there, she talked about the H O A, which they won't hear. It's $350 a year, and they have no idea what that covers because they have to cut their own grass. And I won't go any further than that, but she said she was satisfied, she's only been here six months from Connecticut, but all of their appliances were eco-friendly, cheap things, and they had to buy their own refrigerator. These are cheap, thrown-together houses, and I want to say to anybody, and this goes for hotspot, out of 200 and over 50 homes, there's two cars, 500 more cars buying gas. I don't think they care about our community. We do not want to be a boiling springs. And if you come back here and you're not happy with us, go home, because we love our Mill Village. We like the small, quaint, and if we grow slow, that is fine with us. We were here from the time I was born, and I do own a house in Paklet as well. I pay taxes. I live outside and I live inside. I live outside, but I pay taxes for the house inside as well. I'm sorry if I'm getting nervous. But all these people getting up and telling me how we need this growth, go home if you don't like the way we're growing. Can I have an amen from anybody? Thank you. And none of these, none of these developments right now, it's not going to help the rundown homes, okay? That's an individual thing. They'll sail, they'll get torn down. We've got a lot of people working hard in this community.
Actually, three minutes.
And to step on them, okay, and their efforts, it's just a shame. You cannot build this up and make it better than what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, I can't even read the last name, I don't know. Might be my eyesight or something.
That's right. Good evening to council. I'm a new member in the community. My family and I lived for close to 20 years in one of these high-density residential neighborhoods, and we loved it. We raised our kids, we had a lot of fun. We did have an H O A that charged 350. It helped to maintain the expectations that we had. My kids went off to school, college, and now it's my wife and I. We looked high and low for a nice community to settle in. We came across Paklet, and here we are. We love it. Change is coming. You can bury your head in the sand and say it's not coming. We've got Eaton Corp, 700 new jobs coming. We've just had the recent announcement of the Fine Organics coming just down the street here, outside the limits of Paklet, another 60 jobs. I've worked down by Union, Gestomp, we're expanding. We can't get people to come because there's nowhere for them to live. They're trucking all the way from Boiling Springs, from Simpsonville, and all the way over from near Cowpens and Gaffney because they don't have housing in the area. We need to provide because it's coming. You can bury your head and say it's not coming. Change is coming. Eaton is already refurbishing the old Belk warehouse. Michael works in Union. They too cannot find adequate housing, new housing, because yes, some people like to buy a Mill House and fill it up, or fix it up, but others don't. People are driving from Boiling Springs down to Union because there's nothing in between. My family and I, we came from the Duncanneur area, where it was high-density, it was busy, it was everything. We moved out to, out to the Paklet area. But change is coming with, with the Bar Tavern and all the restaurants, the chiropractic clinic, change is coming. You can't stop it. And we are, we are, we are very pleased with the small town. I keep hearing about Boiling Springs. Forget about Boiling Springs, they did it wrong. Look at Landrum, look at Cowpens, look at Reedville, look at the community, communities that were successful in keeping that small-town feel. They modernized and kept it, but they still, you go to Landrum, we go every year with my family. Why? It's a small-town feel. Paklet can be the same thing. What do we have right now? We have buildings on our main streets falling apart, buildings closing, Walgreens pulling out. What is here? We've got to bring stuff back, and we can maintain the small-town feel. So to compare us to Boiling Springs, out the window. Look to the small communities that have done and been successful. Cowpens, Landrum, Reedville, go check out those communities. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, sir. You never said your name and address. What district do you live in?
I said I'm outside the community.
You're outside of Paklet?
I'm right outside one lot over, I'm on the old road.
I don't know, but I thought it was important to make sure everybody understands that Boiling Springs is not a township, it's not a city, it's not a community, it's actually in the county. It's not even, it's, it's, it's nothing, it's just a, it's just a county community. There's no township, it's not a municipality, nothing of that sort, it's just part of the county. So, so the way Boiling Springs grew, Boiling Springs grew that way because it isn't in the county, there's no municipal tax, there's none of that stuff. So, so the county, Boiling Springs relies specifically on Spartanburg County Sheriff's Department to maintain everything, and most of the time, the Sheriff's Department is in Boiling Springs. If at any point in time, 911 you call, like, "Hey, do we have a deputy available?", they're in Boiling Springs. They're usually always in Boiling Springs. That's just where it is. I appreciate, you know, I've heard a lot of people tonight for and, and not for, and I know you live close to the community, but not in the community, and you're not for the community.
One lot over, one lot over.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I completely understand, and I think, I think the biggest thing to understand is that growth is essential, yes. Town of Paklet is not dying.
It is dying.
I think it's a falsehood.
It is dying.
And I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry.
This is my time.
Our budget, our budget went from, our budget went from 800,000 to 1.4 million in my six, seven years.
This is citizens' comments, this is my time.
Yes, your three minutes was expired.
You took most of my three minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand.
Hang on, hang on.
Growth is coming. We have, it's expired, we said that already.
We have 700 jobs coming to one company.
Wait a minute. We're not, we're not, we usually don't, wait, hold on, hold on a minute. We're not usually back and forth with them, Jason. You know, you know that. We usually don't go back and forth with them. We take the information, and then we'll talk about...
Is that the prescription tonight? We're allowing people from outside the... We're allowing people from outside the town to make comments? And the most of the people, the majority of the people that's made comments tonight have been outside the community, correct?
Hmm. I'd have to say.
What's the relevance?
You want the percentage?
We're not monologuing here.
We got here and we got on the list.
It's citizens' comments.
All I'm saying is you got 1,500 new jobs. You have 1,500 new jobs coming to the area.
You're still allowing comment.
Okay. The what?
You're still allowing comment.
Yeah. That's it. Keep through. Okay. Need approval of minutes, June 5th, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes, June 5th, 2025.
I second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2025. All in favor? All opposed?
Ms. Kirby?
I oppose.
He opposed.
You weren't looking. Yeah. Not accurate.
Okay. Ordinance commission, do you have any of that?
There's no department reports, there's no boards and commission committee reports. Next thing you have is unfinished business.
Okay. Okay, consider the second reading of ordinance for flood damage prevention. You have that in the package?
There was problem with the language on this?
The what?
What has changed on there since I originally sent it to you all on Friday is that there were some items that Paklet Milliken and Lockhart Power wanted to include in there, and DNR said that they could not put that in there, that if they wanted to limit development along the river, that it had to be, it had to be by a map of places that could or could not be developed. And so, because of the fact that DNR is requiring us to approve this by July 1st, you go ahead and have your second reading once Paklet Milliken and Milliken get, Paklet Milliken and Lockhart Power get back to me with their updated items to add back in there. It can be amended at a future date.
This is the second reading?
Yes. You had the first reading actually two or three months ago, so, and then it was asked to have Lock, actually, I think it was you, Mr. Wright, that asked to have Lockhart Power and Paklet Milliken review it. And it took them a little while to review it, and they provided a couple items on there under exemptions.
Yes, sir.
But DNR denied that.
You're saying that they're able, we're able still to amend, or no?
This was just passing the ordinance to go ahead and have it in place, and then later on, we could amend it and update that information that's in there, as far as I know.
Does this satisfy?
What you currently have in front of you satisfies DNR.
What about Paklet Milliken? Is there any kind of, you know, communication with them?
I have had constant contact with them. They had provided some items about, in under the, I believe it was under section D, lands to which this ordinance applies, and they wanted to add some exemptions as it relates to below the dam, of the secondary dam down here.
Right.
But the way it was set up was, what they included on there was that they wanted language that said if anybody built in a particular area along the river, that it would have to be approved by FERC and possibly Lockhart Power on there. And they said that that exemption couldn't be in there, but what they would request instead is just to put in a map of area below the river to provide, you know, this is the area that should not be developed.
This is still included in comprehensive plan, correct?
Um...
Some of this area?
This is not part of our, the, what...
It's not, not looked down? Okay.
What DNR sent me is not part of comprehensive plan. This, DNR had a separate thing.
Okay. So they, you've communicated with them. They understand that maybe change the language to facilitate it next year?
Yes. I told them, I sent an email, and they were all included on this, that, you know, if you could update, send me, we're going to go ahead and pass what we have now.
Right.
That DNR has already approved. And DNR said if you could provide a map instead of the language that you have in here.
Right.
We could add that back in later.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Send the second reading of ordinance for flood damage prevention.
Motion to approve on second reading.
I second the motion.
Motion made in second. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. B is consider the second reading, RZ 2025-01, request to rezone 3-33000-002 dot zero zero. And 3330002 dot zero one from I-1 Light Industrial to FRD Flexible Review District and C-4 General Commercial District.
Motion to table rezoning, RZ 2025-01.
Have a motion to table it.
I second.
Motion made in second. Any questions?
And the reason why we're tabling?
We were advised, the administrator advised us to table.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, I think...
Was that to me or to you?
Yeah. When we table something there...
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer as soon as I have the floor.
The administrator advised us to table this for future because Mark III came back after they withdrew. They came back and said that they don't want to withdraw, so then initially it was withdrawal, and then it came back, and then it was, hey, please table it so that they could come back and talk about this again later.
I didn't see that email.
Yeah. That's one theory.
Hang on. He's the one that made the motion, let him speak.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not okay with the review district because I feel like it takes all authority away from council whatsoever and gives it strictly to the town administrator.
No, it doesn't. Can I answer that question now?
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, this took place in June, and every June. We cram our July meeting into June, so this feels very rushed. I've heard that multiple times tonight. There's a lot of misinformation out there, downright false information, and a lot of that's by design. A lot of conversations need to be had to straighten this out. We don't need to rush it. I'm tabling it because the developer is likely or contemplating pulling out. We've had two meetings in one month in a few weeks.
Hold on, hold on. We will have order, we will be removed, I'm telling you.
So we're giving, I'd like to give some time to clear up a lot of misconceptions.
I mean, one of the misconceptions is the town is dying, and I think too many people have said that.
Is this?
You know, including yourself. The Paklet's dying.
Be patient, Jason. I mean, hang on. Be patient.
We all have opinions. We all have opinions, obviously. I'm just slowing it down. People are saying we're rushing through anything. We're not rushing through anything. Unfortunately, a gentleman died during all this, and this was his final wish, and that changed the pace of things, it changed a lot of things. There's no reason to rush. I don't see a problem in tabling it. Anything can happen at this point. But right now, the timing is off. People have questions, and again, more misinformation than proper information.
All right. You heard the motion in second. Any questions? I would, I'd like for it to include that before this is brought up again, that a proper plan would be submitted to the zoning committee.
Planning commission.
A planning commission, that it would be something that would be more suitable for our town. If you, I would like for you to include that into your motion to table it, that it would be reviewed prior to coming to council again.
That would change the item entirely. We'd have to start over. That's a different...
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Also, I don't know if everyone heard what Mr. Williams was saying, but it was because the Mark III first wanted to withdraw, and then it was changed to table. So that's where that came from, and that was from the town administrator.
Mark III does not direct council. Mark III mentioned that the timing might not be right for Paklet, and I agree.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Don't be quiet. I'm going to get you out now, I'm telling you.
I gave you my reasons for tabling. I gave you my reasons. I'm responding to concerns from the community that we're rushing things. Do you want it to slow, be slower, or not?
Listen, he's not asking you anything. Are you facilitating my making this?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I can't speak for all of Mark III's thoughts, okay? They've been voicing their concerns about feedback. That's it. Tabling it is my choice. Mark III's not directing council, and the administrator isn't, and he never has.
But what happens next?
It's indefinitely off the agenda.
So it's just off? Will we get, like, a notice if it comes back on the agenda?
I don't know, but you, everyone...
It's up to, it'll be up to us to do that, and we'll let you know in the future what happens.
Basically, basically, the intention is to table it tonight so that in the future, when Mark III Properties decides to maybe engage again with the town, then it's already approved this first reading. When they decide to maybe engage the town and after some possible conversations with community and things like that, then maybe we can have a second reading and then we just approve it.
No, that's not how it is. That is not how it is.
On January 26th, I received an email from the town administrator saying that they withdrew their request to rezone.
That January? That was January?
No.
June 6th, I'm sorry. June 6th, they withdrew their request, and then later I got an email from the administrator saying that they called again and just requested to, well, I don't even know what they requested. But however, we was instructed or advised or proposed idea to table it from our town administrator.
We cannot, we cannot speak, we cannot speak for Mark III, you know, we can...
No, I'm only speaking from the email I received from my town administrator.
It's the administrator's job to convey thoughts and intentions.
Did they withdraw?
Okay, hang on.
Do you guys withdraw?
Initially, on June 26th, I was advised that they withdrew their request.
No, we're not going, we're not going to take any questions from the crowd now. I'm not going, I'm not going to take it. I'm going to take it.
I'm not taking it either.
If it doesn't fit the agenda, then I'm sorry, you must be quiet.
Okay. All right, we heard the, the, yeah, let's vote. You heard the motion in second. Anybody have any other questions?
I got one comment. I want the whole town to know and this council here that if this comes back up the way that it is right now, I will vote no. I will stand up against it. Our community, our community is against the dense housing. I would like for it to be sent back to the...
Well, we'll do that in the...
You asked for comments.
That's right. That's good. We can do that in the future when it comes back up.
So we need to vote on tabling?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Reckons.
All right, anything else? Okay, all in favor, tabling it? All opposed? Y'all going to vote? You voting?
Oh, yeah, table.
Okay. Okay, let's do it again. All in favor of tabling it? All opposed? Okay.
So that was six. You were asking for a roll-out, Mr. or Ms. Ritter?
I would love to have a roll-out.
I believe it looked like everybody was for tabling it.
Yeah. Yours came up light, I was making sure.
Do you want me to? I believe, I didn't look across the table. I think the question was about myself, and I did in fact say, please table.
Okay. All right. Okay, new business? Thank you. Consider allocating funds from the capital improvement fund to purchase police department equipment. You have that in the package?
I make a motion that we move forward with allocating these funds to provide the police department with the necessary computer systems that they need.
I second the motion.
Motion made in second to approve the allocating of the funds for capital improvement funds to the police department equipment. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed?
That was four, not opposed.
Okay, any, Mr. Star Miko, you have anything?
No, sir, I don't. I just want to thank the community for coming out tonight. No, sir. I'm good.
You're good. Tom, you have? You have anything, Tom? Rick, you good?
No, I got a comment. I want, I want everybody in the community to know and understand that over the last few weeks, there've been some really negative comments toward council and toward this administration. And to the best of my knowledge, they're unfounded, that all of the people that's sitting up here, we're not doing this for publicity, we're not doing it for glory, or as someone's insinuated, people in our pockets. Ain't nobody in my pocket, and I don't think nobody up here is being paid for their vote or any other way. We want to do what is best for our community, and I think everybody up here has listened to your input and is trying to do what's best for our community, and we certainly appreciate your support.
Say something, maybe. You have anything?
Yeah. So, what my concern is, is I've heard a lot of chatter about how Paklet's dying, and I'm sorry, this community's not dying. Paklet's not dying. Paklet is, Paklet's a survivor, and Paklet has been Paklet for so many years. The Mill left, and the Mill left in like the 80s, you know, like it's, I mean, the Mill left so long ago, it's unreal, and the town's still here, and everybody's still here. Kids, people's kids live here, and grandkids live here, and most of my neighbors, like, it's unreal, like their whole family lives here, and they want to live here. And to hear that leadership in this town says this town's dying is sad. I don't want to hear that. I don't think it's right, and I do think that growth is essential. I 100%, agree that growth is essential. My only issue with the growth that we're proposing right now is I don't think that this is what, I don't think this is the direction the town needs to go, and I don't think that this is the direction that we perceived. There's a lot of people that already live in this town that don't have anywhere to shop or go out to eat. We already are struggling to have restaurants, but I think the biggest part of that isn't going to be fixed by bringing 270-something houses in. I think the biggest part of that is just being competitive to the rest of the community. And I think we were already on the right path. We, the comprehensive plan has been delayed for so many years. The master plan, so many years, not been readdressed. The town itself has not established a moving forward plan, and I heard this from Paklet Milliken, and I heard this from McGurran, I heard this from Lockhart, I heard this from most of the investors in the area, that until we decide a path moving forward, they don't want to do much for the town. When we decided to, hey, let's do a comp plan, let's pay to get this done, because it's not free, we have to pay. We have to say we're going to allow the money to get this done. The master plan, the comp plan, those parties joined the conversation. The conversation... The conversation they joined in is different now, like what, they even had say-so in how we developed the property and how we zoned it, but then a month later, we're going to rezone it differently. And I understand, it has a lot to do with growth and how we're going to grow, and you take the first opportunity necessary. That's all running great. However, those investors really, the investors that were rooted into Paklet wanted to see the intention of growth. Now, we're talking about bringing investors in, like Mark III that's not rooted in Paklet. The ones that, the investors that are from Paklet, rooted to Paklet, they wanted to see the growth, we gave them the growth. We haven't even given them time to see or even get a plan after we developed a comp plan, a master plan. We're just taking the first thing that comes. And my concern is, is that we're just grabbing hold of whatever comes. I don't want to see the first thing that pops up, we just snap it, we grab, and we go with it. I don't want to see that. That's my issue with it. I apologize for being combative. However, I don't apologize for being against. It's not right, this is not the direction I think Paklet needs to go. If Paklet Milliken said industry needs to be on 176, let's give them the opportunity to show us that that's probably feasible. The amount of acreage that's near the river where houses probably should be is enormous. Why don't we put industry at 176 where they can get trucks and trailers and equipment easily to that area? Where houses can be built next to the river and the properties that are owned next to the river? Why don't we do that? It's the idea and the plan that makes sense, and I don't know why we're veering from that. I don't understand, other than in my mind, I think this is the wrong direction. So, with that, all I mean is, I just want it to grow efficiently. I don't want it to grow out of hand. Condensed housing is just not going to work. I just don't think that's the way to go anywhere, any community. It doesn't matter what township, it doesn't matter if it's Cowpens, and I hear all these things. Paklet is not that community. We don't have that already. And mill housing, I heard mill housing earlier. Mill housing is huge, there's large properties, and there's a lot of mill houses that are for sale. Fix them up, fine, cool. You buy a mill house and you can, you know, build, you know, fix it up, and that's what I did, you know, and why not just invest in what's already here? There's so many houses already for sale in Paklet. I don't see people rushing here to buy houses that are already cheaper than what's going to be sold at the Mark III properties. I just don't see that, you know?
Okay. Appreciate it. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. We'll wish you all a happy 4th of July, and we'll be back in August for another meeting.
Motion in adjourned?
I second.
Motion made in second adjourned. All in favor?